Now, let's call this meeting to order, please. And I'd like to say in advance that apologize for our tardiness. We were in closed session and we apologize. First item, please.
Roll call. Hussein Berry here. Fadwa Hamud.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Cillian Esser.
Here.
Mary Petrichoff.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
And President Mead.
Here. Next item, please.
Next item is pledge allegiance to the flag. President Mead will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item, please.
Superintendent update. First item is agenda items.
So I'll just start with our normal. We have less this month, but we have retirements and we want to recognize those staff and thank them for their service to the district. We have Paula Brumfield, 15 years. Kelly Salone, over 30 years. Sue Jusick, 24 years. Mary Ross, 17 years. We have Lisa Vincent with 21 years. We have Patricia Barnaby with over 31 years. Richard Farrell with over 23 years. And Hannah Mahmoud with 20 years of service. So again, we thank them for their years of service, wish them all the best, and congratulate them if we could show our appreciation for the staff. And that is it for agenda items.
Non-agenda items?
So I do want to mention today, and it is going public, but we're being highlighted in the District of Administration. It's a, I have the magazine here, but it's going to go electronically. It's a National Superintendent Administrative Association. It's a large readership. And we're one of 30 districts that are being recognized for this honor. In fact, I'll receive recognition out of town in Chicago when I go to their summit. And it is for our school improvement process that we have been implementing in our data-driven instruction. And so it's something that we plan to bring more details to the board and to highlight. But it's something that as the board members were here for the advanced ed review and the commentary that came that, you know, our process is, you know, second to none. So I want to thank the board for their support of this recognition and their support moving forward administration. We have our staff here, the community, because our school improvement process, we involve parents as well. And so it's just something to be really proud of. And Ms. Farage, who are our school improvement director, I just want to make a shout out to her too, because she's really helped. But it's really truly a full district effort. So I do want to mention that and I do plan to publish that on my blog, because I just got notice today that it was made public. I have a few other things here. The infrastructure committee meetings are going to move forward soon. We're still in the process of finalizing the list. We have people that are confirming. And so once we get that list, Mr. Muston and Ms. Harris are working on that and Ms. Candia will make sure that the board gets a copy of that list. But the first meeting for that committee will be on August 1. I will be there at the beginning of the first meeting to kind of introduce, but then I will not be part of it. As the trustees are not going to be part of it, as we look for recommendations moving forward, we've got a lot of topics on the agenda. So I just wanted to point out that that's going to be moving forward soon. And we have a tight agenda. We've already set all the dates moving into October so that it keeps us on a tight timeline moving forward.
Quick question. I was asked if these meetings are open meetings. I didn't know how to answer that, so.
We can discuss that. They're not technically, because they're not official board meetings, they wouldn't have to be by law, you know, open. But we'll, I'll discuss that with my team and figure out, you know, how we want to handle that moving forward.
Thank you.
So the other thing, I'm going to have Mr. Mashur come up to explain the boundary line exemption process. We do, this is the time where we get a lot of, and the board may recall that one of the things we did last year under your support and direction was the consultants had told us that bound, school of choice inner district was creating part of the issue with our overcapacity. So we did eliminate that, but we allowed it, limited boundary line exemption process. And we have a process now that we went through the policy committee, and it is actually administrative guidelines, but it was implemented this year to help moving forward so that we don't have a lot of movement, but yet still trying to allow those individuals that may have a hardship. So I'll turn that over to Mr. Mashur.
Okay, I'm just going to try to give a brief overview. Good evening again, everyone. I just try to give a brief overview of the hardship process and so on. First of all, the one, one of the first criteria we look at in defining a hardship before we even look at what the hardship is, is space at that school. The majority of our schools, as you know, are at a full, or overcapacity. So we just try to make sure we at least have space first and foremost. Secondly, one of the things, the criteria that a lot of people try to use to base their hardship on is childcare. Childcare can be definitely one of the things, the hardships that a family is going through, but at the same time, it has to be a little bit more than childcare. We only say that because there's so many childcare needs for so many of our families that if we use that as a sole criteria, we would approve predominantly, probably about 60%, 70% of our applications just based on that alone. And the childcare options obviously have, there's extensive childcare options out there for people. I know they're not always convenient and some may be costly to some extent, but at the same time, we try to make it, you know, more than childcare, just as one of the factors to be considered. You know, our big thing is we don't want to grant admission based on a specific school. So sometimes, for example, people claim they have a hardship. We offer them a school, it may not be the school that they asked for, but we offer them a school and we eliminate so that hardship and they still deny. So to us, that tells us that it's not necessarily their hardship that they're trying to get help for, they're trying to get into a certain school. So we try to limit that as much as possible. Basically, when we look at hardships, we're looking at granting hardships when it's shown that the child's success, the child's school, school success is detrimental if they don't go to that particular school. Okay? Or they have to go to their, their particular homeschool, that then they're, you know, they might not be as successful for whatever reason. Okay, so the process basically is now two parts. We used to have one part, which was the petition and then, thanks. We used to have one part, which was pretty much the petition. They filed the petition, we tell them yes or no, and then if they didn't like the answer, they would come back and we would have conversation upon conversation and we were the same people. So one of the things that we decided to do, well, we have our officials, our, our initial screening committee, which is myself and, you know, one or two other people that are in my office, Student Services Office. And then the second part of it would be where they meet with a group of administrators and so on that are from, represent different parts of our city, different schools, et cetera, and central office. So the initial petition, again, is reviewed by us at Student Services and we look at the hardship presented, we look at the child's, if it's not a kindergarten student, of course, we look at the child's success or lack thereof, we look at attendance, we look at behavior, we look at every factor that, you know, we can, we can kind of, you know, use to determine what we should do for this, for the student. The other thing that we do is we sometimes talk to the school, like if it's a middle school student going to high school, we talk to them, the middle school, maybe administration, teachers, et cetera, and ask, okay, would it be detrimental in any way for this child to go to their homeschool, or do they really need to go to this other school? What do you know about their history, their background, that type of thing? Just to get a better gauge of, you know, of the situation. And then after we make a decision, we send a letter to the family and that's the initial process, that's the first part. If, if, obviously it's an approval letter, then everybody's happy and we move on from there. If the letter is denied, the child is denied enrollment in the school that, that the family was requesting, they're, they're able to file an appeal process. The appeal committee, as I said, is, you know, anywhere between three and five administrators representing different buildings, central office, et cetera. The appeals committee basically doesn't know anything, I mean, ideally, and then this our first case, our first time trying to get, those people didn't know any of the other people. So it wasn't like anyone was trying to get into the school where they were an administrator at. We'll try and do that as often as we can, but as you know, you know, we had 15 appeals the first time we went through. It's not always going to be easy to make sure that those people aren't leaving the school where the administrator is, is part of that process or wanting entrance into that school. So anyhow, what we do at that, with that committee, the only information that I provide them, or the Student Services Office provides them, we provide them the initial petition that was filed, and then we provide them with the reasoning as to why the application was denied. And we give it to them and they're free to make whatever decision they want and they go from there. That gives the parent an opportunity to sit down and plead their case in front of five administrators that, you know, are totally, you know, independent in their thinking and so on. So, and they don't need to have a five zero vote in order for my decision or the original decision to be overturned. They just need to have the majority of the panel. So if three out of the five people say, you know, hey, we know, we think this is a true hardship, this is something we need to do to help this family out, it's not a problem and we go from there. But the one thing that we were trying to get our families and community to understand is that that decision is final. So basically, if they're denied, you know, the petition is denied initially, that's two to three people. So let's assume on the low end, it's two people that made the initial determination to deny the petition. Then there's five other people, so now you have seven people theoretically that could have denied the petition. If seven people denied the petition, then to me, it's time to move on and go from there. And we always, you know, tell them that, look, if you have any issues or concerns about the school you're going to, go ahead and meet with administrator prior to the school year beginning. And, you know, a lot of times it's, you know, families don't necessarily understand what, you know, the school has to offer, or they think the school is run a certain way when it's not. So sometimes those, you know, those, those perceptions are there, but they're not always accurate, as you know. So we try to handle it in that way. But that's just, like I said, a brief overview of, of the process that we're trying to use now. One of the things that we did in the first time around with appeals letters is the appeals letters were still pretty generic overall. So what we're going to do the next time we have our appeals hearings is make our letters a lot more specific. And the committee will offer their input, their specific input about each situation as to why it was denied. And then send a letter that states such to the family.
Do you have any idea how many people will petition?
We had, for the first time, and we can't do the, the whole process, like obviously all the time, because it's very time consuming, but we review applications for the summer in two, in two, you know, two different sessions. The first session is May-June, and then, you know, this is for the upcoming school year, and then we'll also do one in August. Because we finished the first one, that was about 185 applications, if I remember right. So we did those. And right now on my desk, I have probably another 80 applications that I've received from since the end of the school year. And some people don't even know we're open, we still had that many. But anyway, so we review them then and we will review them again in mid-August and we'll have the appeals from there. From the first session, the 185, we had 15 people that, that requested an appeal. So we had 15 appeals hearings.
Was this a larger number than what you've traditionally seen in the last few years?
No, as far as overall, no. And then a lot of them really were easy to approve because it was due to our boundary changes.
That's what I wanted to know, whether there was a change due to the...
Yes, so in the 185, because a lot of the applications before too were school of choice applications.
Right.
And to be honest, some of these hardships that are being presented are really school of choice. It's, you know...
Just, just a difference.
My, my father went to school here, my uncles went to school here, I want to go to school here. There's no really hardship, it's just a preference, if you will.
Trustee Berry.
There's a lot of part of your job that's fun, this one's not, so I have nothing to do with this. But can you clarify the statement that the appeal committee is, decision is final? Can you just clarify that?
Yeah, so, so basically what we're trying to do is that, okay, so once the appeals committee has heard, heard your plea, there isn't a second appeal and a third appeal and a, you know, or whatever. The appeals committee, here's your, your, you know, your case. And again, like I said, it's five people that don't know much about your case besides the paperwork and information you provided the Student Services Office initially. And, you know, so then, I mean, we have to have a finish line at some point.
Sure, sure. So it's the board through policy that gave the administration that power to say this is, yes.
Correct, yeah.
Because I get sometimes, and I'm sure we all get phone calls saying, oh, I was told that you have nothing to do with this. Well, yeah, we handed off to the administration, that's why this is...
So I mean, it's, it's, you know, the same thing for Dr. Maleko, as I'm sure you're aware, so some of our, our principals, et cetera, people are always reaching out to different people to try, you know, to get, you know, their, their appeal reversed or whatever, your, their, their decision reversed or whatnot. And it's just to kind of protect everybody and clean up the process and that type of thing.
I get that. What I would like to see is maybe employees, when they're talking to these, to the parents that are not happy at this point, you know, they didn't get their way, maybe clarify when they say that, don't just say this is final, clarify that the board gave us the ability to say, please.
The authority, the authority to make the final...
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Keeps the politics out of it, keeps the favoritism out of it. It's, it's, it's to protect everyone's...
Absolutely, and that's, that's why we came up with what we did.
Any other observations? Thank you, sir.
And one, one, one more point, I'm sorry, just to clarify. Thank you. We often get, well, what's a hardship? What would you accept as a hardship? And sometimes, you know, it really goes back to, we're looking, or the committee's looking at this, from my understanding, case by case basis. Every case is different, every school has different availabilities, or every single situation is different, whether somebody has a sibling at a specific school. So there is no criteria of what is a hardship. And that's not something we can define, to tell somebody, hey, if you put this on your application, that's a hardship.
Correct, correct. And then hardships also change, you know? Somebody might be involved in a terrible traffic accident and they're, you know, have some kind of crippling or whatever situation that they have to deal with. So just like in society, they might get a handicap sticker or whatever, so they can park closer, sure on their walk, et cetera, et cetera. But when they're up and ready to move on with their life and healthy again, that is no longer a hardship. They don't get a handicap sticker for life, they get a handicap sticker for three years or whatever, two, three months, or whatever the situation, you know, you know, may, may bring about. And that's the same thing with, you know, what we like, we say as well, there really is no, you know, like, parents all, they'll often ask me, well, have you accepted other applications? Yes, we have. Well, how come mine wasn't accepted? Well, because your situation is not the same as the others. And obviously, I can't disclose, you know, what the other family situation or family dynamics might be as to why we accepted the hardship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just comment there before, I'm going to ask Mr. Wall to come up. But basically, you know, they, if I get contacted, I honor the process as well that we've all established. And I say, look, it goes back to the committee and this decision, but I explain the process and I'm going to be, you know, I'm going to work with our customers and talk to them, and I will talk to them. But I explain it and I, you know, if I need to, I look through and I go back to Student Services and with Mr. Mashur, and we look through the case and then we move forward and we get them a response. But at the same token, I let them know that my role as superintendent isn't to make individual case decisions, it's to honor the process that we all agreed to and make sure that that's being followed.
Good.
So, Mr. Wall's going to come up on the food service. There was a question that came up on the cost from Mr. Berry. And I know there was a memo that went out, but you were just going to kind of get back to the board on the cost of the CEP free and reduced lunch.
Correct. Thank you for, and good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I handed some information out earlier, but it's just a quick presentation for the public, guys will also see. So right now, we do have a community eligible provision, which is shortened to CEP, that we offer free lunch to everybody in the school regardless of their economical status. And when we do that, the state has a particular formula that follows. So the question was, that was brought up, which is a good question, is why don't we offer it to everybody in the school? And if we did that, what would be the impact? So the way the state calculates it is taking the current free and reduced lunch that the state has on file outside of the free and reduced application process. So when it looks at that, so a building that is free and reduced at, let's say, 66%, the state takes that number times 1.6 modifier, and that's what it says you're eligible in that school for free and reduced lunch for district wide. So you roughly have to be around 66, 67% to get the full 100% funding for everybody in the school. Anything more with that, you don't get any more money, but anything less than that, the state actually takes money away from you. Because it treats those that are underneath that percentage on a use basis to be paid, a paid lunch, which gets different amounts of reimbursement from the state. The state reimburses this for lunch at over $3 for a free lunch and only 31 cents for a paid lunch. So you can see, there's a big difference between that. So this shows our schools, and the ones highlighted in red have already, are eligible right now and are participating in the community education program, the CEP program. You can see their percentages are much higher. These are actually the inflated by the 1.6%. So the ones below that, you can see are not as much. So if you take someone like Bryant, the very first one, their 1.6 percentage only comes to just under 40%. So if we had everybody free lunch in that program, we'd only get 40% of that as free, the other 60% will be only the 31 cents, and we'd actually lose money in that scenario. Where someone like Henry Ford, which is the first red one, there are just about 100%. So everybody in the building is considered free and we get the higher dollar value for them. So you can see each individual building there. This is the second, second building. We have roughly about 15 schools that are participating in that program. Those are the ones that are high on the schedule of their free and reduced percentages when you multiply it by 1.6. So the net effect is that we would actually lose just under $1.3 million in revenue if we actually made the entire district free under the CEP program. And that is coming from the paid lunches, because those that are paying now, no longer pay, so that's a loss of revenue. And the other portion is actually the difference between the paid lunch the state gives us and the free lunch, that difference just makes up that $1.3 million. Now, there are some caveats that we also have to be aware of, that when we go to the CEP program, they no longer fill out a free and reduced application process. So with that going away, we use that free and reduced application percentage in each school to determine our Title I funding. So now we have to go to a voluntary survey, which basically asks the same questions to determine whether they're free and reduced, to make sure our percentage in our entire building is funded by Title I based on that percentage. So when you go from a mandatory program to a volunteer program, your percentages of participation is going to drop. And one of the things we're concerned about is if this program, if we actually did the high schools, as everyone's well aware of, the parent participation in high schools drop off what you see in the elementary and middle school level. And the state has warned us that anyone that has done the CEP program at the high school level has seen reduction in Title I funding. So that's a caveat that we can't really guess, but we would expect some sort of decrease from that. And just as, so the question is, where do we go from here from now? What I'm recommending is to continue to watch that and see where our free and reduced percentages go. If they continue to rise, then that's something we can readdress and add additional buildings in the future. That's my short presentation.
All right. Any questions? Trustee Berry.
You pretty much answered most of my questions, but that's how the state looks at it, just building by building?
Yes, you have to do it on building by building basis. Now, you start, you can combine buildings, then you average percentage. So when you average percentages, one building will go lower, another one will go higher. But the ones we like to average, if someone that's over like 90%, and someone's at 50, you can kind of bring them both up to 100%. So we have done that in the first round of process.
Okay. Let's say we decide, let's say, no, we decide, let's say it's further down the road, the middle schools, we see some things, can we combine the middle schools and present it as...
Yep, and so whenever, so right now, we're, we're locked into this for five years. We've had our entire district go to 0% free and reduced, doesn't matter, we're locked in for five years, and the state's going to honor that pricing or that, that calculation. If we go forward, we have to relook at the entire district at that point in time to see who qualifies or who has the highest percentages to make it economically.
Sure. And at the high schools, you mentioned, how much money do we get from federal grants? Just, just guesstimating. I know it's a 2.6...
I think it's $2.6 million for all three high schools.
All three high schools.
Right.
Okay. That's the point I was trying to make in the beginning, that, you know, hey, when people are questioning the district and the percentage, you know, they try to set some, like a negative light on the district because of that, but, you know, obviously with that comes money that we spend back on our buildings and we spend back on our programs and we spend on our, our students.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Wait, trustee Lane.
So the, the, the number cited, 1.296 million...
Right.
Is without administrative costs being taken out of there. There's no administration in there.
Correct. The only thing that changes is actual, the revenue stream. The program on the expense side states save whether we offer free or don't offer free. So it's just basically a loss of revenue that you're in back.
Uh huh. Do we have any idea how much time we spend?
Well, if we continue with the voluntary surveys, we're going to do the exact amount of time as we did during the application process.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have one more thing in my commentary, Ms. Peterson's going to come up. And there were some comments and questions, and we've had from Henry Ford College that have come up about, you know, remedial classes and then how our success. And we had some very positive presentations by Dr. Nealan, you know, so comments were made, you know, this is an area we need to work on and we're going to look at the data. So I want Mr. Peterson to provide a presentation. I also want to, and I, this was public, we're excited to have Dr. Mosalem take on a new role of looking, really allocating a huge resource into that area that was discussed. And so we're excited moving forward. I know he's excited as well. And so more to come with that, but it's going to take us a little time as we move forward looking at some of that data, that is for students that are ready to go into four-year universities, but not just that college and career. So I'm going to have Ms. Peterson provide some of that data briefly, and then there's going to be more to come. This is an ongoing piece that we need to work with, as you, as you're aware, it started with the college and we're very appreciative, I know...
Would you like to recognize that our new college president is here?
Yes, our new, yeah, let's give him, he's here. This is a Cavalluna. And I just want to say, I appreciate, we've already been, you know, meeting for several different issues, topics, collaborating, and I appreciate the support of the board because I do think under our partnership that we really are going to take this partnership of P-12 to the college, really to the next level. We have, under the parameters of the board, the makings of greatness on a national level, and we're going to do this for the benefit of our students. So I look forward to working with you moving forward. Thank you.
How do I follow that? How's everybody tonight? So Dr. Maleko asked me to create one slide, I couldn't do it, so bear with me. And we're going to talk about college enrollment and readiness, but there's, there's the other aspect of career readiness, and that is something that we really haven't figured out how to measure. So I'll interject a little bit of that as well. For college enrollment, it's pretty exciting when I look at the data. If you look at from 2010, you know, the school year from 11, 12 to 15, 16, we have increased our college enrollment by about 6%, which doesn't sound like a lot, except we're almost 20% more than the state. So the state actually decreased a percent of the students, the senior class that enrolls in college within a year. And in Dearborn, our last numbers were 86.7% of our students enroll in college, which is pretty exciting. Then what I did was I took a look at college completion, because you can get that information from my school data as well. So if you look at Dearborn Schools class of 2012, so far, 33% earned a certificate or a degree versus the state's 32%. 22% earned a four-year degree, where 24% of the state have completed a four-year degree. But we are persistent because 36% of our students from 2012 are still continuing their college education, where the state only 19% are. 21% are no longer enrolled from the class of 2012 for us, but the state of Michigan's class of 2012, 28% are no longer enrolled. And we only had 9% that had no record of college enrollment versus the state's 20% of no record of college enrollment. So I'm going to throw a little caveat in here, because, you know, my student, my children went to Dearborn Schools, and I can speak to two students in the class of 2012 that have very different paths, and we don't track it. So, we talk about career readiness. I can speak to a two thousand twelve graduate who went to college, decided he wanted to be a Detroit police officer, went to the academy, has a full-time job, but he's also continuing his education. So, he's in our thirty-six percent. Then we have another student who never went to college, so he, he's in our nine percent. But he went to the academy, we don't track that. He's a Detroit police officer. He's got a, he's got a career, got a home, he's got insurance, he's got retirement. We don't know how to track that, so that'll be a challenge for us to track. Our students that actually did leave high school and walk into a career, get some training that we don't track. So, that'll be a challenge for us, because I think there's more than just those two people out there. If you look at our two thousand, class of two thousand ten, forty-nine point two percent of our class of two thousand ten have earned a certificate or a degree versus thirty-nine percent in the state. Thirty-nine percent of our students in the class of two thousand ten earned a four-year degree versus thirty point five percent of the Michigan, state of Michigan's class of two thousand ten. Seventeen percent of our students are still pursuing their education, where only nine percent in the state. Twenty-seven percent are no longer enrolled. State beat us on that number, which I don't think they wanna beat us on as well, thirty-two percent. And again, only seven percent had no record of college attendance or enrollment. So, what that tells me is, number one, I think our students are persistent. And they have, might take them a little longer, but more of our students actually complete college. So, college remedial coursework. Here, we know we have, we have improvements to make in every area. But when you look at our students that attend Wayne State, seventy to eighty percent of them go right into college classes. They do not take any remedial. And in University of Michigan Dearborn, seventy-six to eighty percent. So, those numbers are very consistent. They do not take any remedial courses. Our students that go to Henry Ford, seventy-three percent of them typically need to take a remedial course. One of the reasons we work together with the math professors to create the college concepts, because remember, whether or not they take, have to take a remedial course, comes down to a test. Not, not all students can show what they truly know and are able to do on a test. So, we are looking at avenues, and I know that Dr. Mosalem will be looking at more avenues for that. And also, we know that our students that attend Henry Ford, some of them attend for the reason that they're really not ready for a four-year university, and they're, they're gonna get ready. And it's financial for others, and for others, it's, they offer a terrific nursing program or the programs that they offer. So, we have, we have work to do, but we also have a lot of success in this area. And I think that's it.
You used the examples of Wayne State and U of M Dearborn. Is that because that's the two four-year universities that most of our students attend?
Right.
Trustee Lane?
Yeah, this is really interesting to me, because there's a lot of public discussion about remediation, and there's gnashing of teeth and wailing and all of that. So, the number at Henry Ford is, is interesting. I'm assuming that that is because some of those students, or, or as a body, they perhaps have a lower SAT score, whereas students who are, have a higher score. I don't know what other factors might be.
They get accepted as opposed to.
Right. Rhetorically, I just wonder if it occurs to anyone in higher education that maybe the rating of the school aid fund for four hundred million dollars, maybe that affects remediation also. If lower ed had four hundred ex, four hundred million extra dollars, maybe there wouldn't be as much remediation at higher ed.
When I spoke with Schoolcraft, because I was trying to get them to accept our college concepts agreement as well, when students have to take remedial courses, you know, it does hinder their financial aid, because they only get it for four years.
Oh, yeah, it's a big problem at colleges and for individuals.
Having my own child that had to take some remedial courses, and he is now on the dean's list. If he needs the extra help and he gets it, I'm happy, but not everybody can pay for it.
And I think, yes, and, and those of us that, that are, are grateful to have the opportunity. I'm just wondering, are there other things that we, as a college, speaking as Board of Trustees for a college or as a district, that we could do? I just don't wanna set up someone when we know there's going to be a failure like summer, summer learning loss. So, I, I know I've asked before, when we're testing students, and we know the problem, or I thought, up until recently, the problem was, until I saw the AP scores, I thought the problem was mostly math. So, my question is, could there be closer integration between, and I think Fordson's already doing this, could there be closer integration between our high schools testing before college-bound seniors leave for placement tests, so that they don't have summer learning loss? If I went now and took the placement test at Henry Ford College, I'm sure I'd be placed, even though I write a lot, I'm, I think I probably still would be placed maybe in English. I don't know. So, in other words, can we, yeah, it might, it might be.
And I know that we, that kinda was our thought behind the college concepts, and we're now talking about reading. How do we tackle reading? It's a little bit different, because college concepts for math could be used as their senior math, where something for reading really couldn't be used for language arts, seven and eight. So, we have to, we have to get creative. But we are talking with the college about, how do we get creative?
I'd say, as we continue to talk, it's gonna get better. I think we need to do more of that and have more of those meetings that, when we presented from Dr. Nealan.
We do send a greater percentage of students to college, and they persevere and.
And is the persistence, is that related to economic factors? So, we have students that are trying to get through school. It takes them longer, I'm wondering, since I believe we're, we're higher, a higher poverty district.
Could be.
So.
Trustee Hamud?
Thank you. No, no, I'm done.
Thank you. So, I'm excited to see that we finally have some data from U of M. Is that recent, that we were finally able to get to that?
You locked me in a room with someone from U of M during the William Ford exercise.
Well, something good came out of that.
I charmed him.
That's awesome. It's data like this that really makes me so excited to see a position like Dr. Mosalem's position up. And I think that it's gonna be crucial in terms of how could we work together in order to do something about these numbers? Because even though compared to the state, hey, they're good, but I know that we're never okay settling for good. So, I'm excited, you know.
We want a hundred percent.
Absolutely. So, I'm excited to hear from you. I know that it's too soon now, but hopefully, I know that you're working with the college president, President Cavalluna, who's here today. And I hope this will extend to other presidents as well, from other higher education facilities and colleges and so on. And looking forward to hear soon as to what some of the plans that we think can be put in place, based on our research, how could we improve these numbers? Because really, it's, it's such a critical role. And I wanna thank Dr. Maliko for having someone serve in such a critical position. I know that it's important to our district to have something like this.
And to Shannon's point as well, because my husband was in the skilled trades. He did go to college, but he ended up going, joining the carpenters union. And, and those skilled trades also provide a very lucrative job over, over a lifetime. And quite frankly, we wouldn't have any way of tracking those individuals either. So, I would like to make sure that when we, when we're so focused on college completion and all, and all of that, that we don't miss out on those other opportunities of career paths that don't require a degree or certificate necessarily, but do have an outcome of a job that is something that can support a family monetarily. And so, that when Dr. Mosalem is looking at the college readiness programs, maybe we can somehow consider those other opportunities to at least be part of the discussion. Because quite frankly, I know a lot of the skilled trades unions are struggling to have people in their ranks that are prepared and are coming out of high school ready to learn their skills as well. It's, it's, it's not a no-brainer job. So, quite frankly, we may need to be able to show that we're supporting those types of opportunities and pathways as well.
Trustee Lane?
Well, exactly what Trustee Pachalkov is talking about, I believe, will be occurring this Thursday or Friday. Mr. Cavalluna will be having the governor talking about his Marshall Plan. So, I guess it's an opportunity for a free public service announcement on behalf of Henry Ford College. But thank you, Dr. Maliko and Mr. Cavalluna for that. Yeah, I agree with everything Trustee Pachalkov has said. It's really an important, because not everyone is gonna be a scholar.
Trustee Berry?
Yes, I'm ecstatic with what I'm hearing tonight. So, this discussion started with college readiness. Numbers were not acceptable to us. So, I did hear tonight, that's an area we need to improve on. I'm very happy. The other is, yes, I agree with everybody here, the fact that we handed off to a very effective educational leader. I'm looking forward to continue this discussion. So, our graduation rates are through the roof, and once we get this right too, who wouldn't wanna live in Dearborn? I really mean that, so, thank you. Thank you.
If I just add real quick, just, there's a preliminary, the Marshall Plan meeting at Henry Ford College is this Thursday, and I know myself and some others will be attending. And we've already started preliminary, preliminary, and I say that conversations with the different trade unions and our different partners, as well as bringing in adult education as a partner. And conversations, of course, with our partner and our brother and sister at Henry Ford College. We're gonna continue growing that. And we're in the preliminary discussions, we're putting some things together, but I know that all of us working together, the partnerships of Dr. Maliko's, coordinating with the process as well as the board. Our goal is to make some, as a district and as a community and as a city, make some great things continue to happen. So, we're looking forward to it. So, thank you for that opportunity.
I think it's fair to say that the whole board is very excited about the coordination between the college and the P through twelve in terms of identifying students early that need remediation, so that they get that service. And I think I'm getting the idea that some of the faculty from the college are working with some of the faculty in the P-12, and especially in the areas of mathematics. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, together, the coordinators and the professors at the college created the college concepts course. Dr. Gilliland and I will be presenting that actually at a conference in the fall.
Good.
So, and we're looking at the data. It, we found some challenges this year, because we're talking seniors, and they wanted to provide interventions, but they, they had jobs, or, so they weren't there. So, they're getting a little more creative this year. It was successful, but not as successful as they wanted, so they're.
Yeah, but it's a great start. For years, we didn't work together. To have the college in P-12, and especially to have the superintendent and the new president working together, they'll, they'll provide that leadership. I think we will be able to identify students early in the process and give them every opportunity to be prepared to deal with the colleges and the trade unions, whatever. So, I appreciate that effort very, very much, and I think I can speak for everybody on that. Is that fair? Everybody?
For me, you're here.
That's it for me.
That's it, next item?
My brief commentary.
Next, uh, Trustee Nasser told me ahead of time that she needed to leave at eight o'clock. She has another responsibility, so thank you very much. Now, next item, please.
Next item, recognition, acknowledgements.
We have Dr. Chokel, who's gonna come up for donations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A donation of two thousand five hundred dollars has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by the Education Alliance of Memory of Michigan in memory of State Superintendent Brian Wiston. A donation of two thousand dollars has been offered to William Ford Elementary School by the Home Depot Foundation to be used to beautify the grounds, flagpole area, creating garden areas, providing benches, and a neighborhood outdoor mini lending library. That's it.
Next item, please.
Before you go on to that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Lane.
Yeah, I, normally, we have commendations in here, so I did wanna give a commendation.
Sure.
In the Down River Times Herald from June, we had a Snow School student who was mentioned. His award is AAA Safety Patroler of the Year. I'm not sure if it's statewide, regional, or whatever. His name is Presley Grist, and he got an, he got an award for himself and Tiger tickets. And the Snow School also got some safety supplies. I remember being a safety myself at Collins School, and it was something that I really enjoyed. He succeeded at it. It's really great. So, if that could be added to the minutes, one other thing I want, and I'll pass it over to Mrs. Harris.
And I was at that ceremony. I attended when he received it. It was very positive. It was a statewide award.
Oh, okay, there we go.
And Mr. Mustenan was there, and the school, and the student, and his father, who we know is very active at Snow, was very proud, so it was wonderful.
That is very active. He's got the dad.
It's very fitting that there was Tiger tickets. Baseball.
Good. So, one other thing I did wanna mention, there was a really nice article, it was beautiful on the front page, the Free Press, right, about Fordson High School. It's a really great picture. We're all really proud of Fordson, of course. A few days following, there was a letter to the editor commenting that, about Fordson's being a crown jewel of Dearborn by someone who wasn't living in Dearborn, but I, I've never heard of this before. They had just bought a house in Dearborn, weren't going to be able to vote on the millage. And the people that they bought the house from asked them how they would want the person they'd wanna vote on it. And they voted to pass, pass our, our last millage to improve Fordson, which was pretty interesting to me. But for, talking all things Fordson, I, on vacation, I was at the Museum of English Rural Life in Reading, England, and I found these postcards for Fordson tractors. I just want anybody from Fordson to see.
Those tractors really existed.
Yeah, they, they really did exist. We know that, that, because there's two of them over at Fordson High School. But Fordson's fame is far-reaching, so it, it exists around the world, and it's a real point of pride, so.
My husband says we're the center of the universe.
Well, he's right.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by seven, ten PM by submitting a blue card to the secretary, may speak at this time. Chair, I don't have any blue cards.
Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Regular P through twelve meeting, June twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen. Board Report eighteen dash zero one. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So, move.
It's been moved and supported at these minutes. We approved, any discussion? Yes.
When I was reviewing the minutes at page eleven, it, I read through, and I, I'm not quibbling with the, the, with what's mentioned here. It says, "Trustee Hamud thanked the board for moving forward on the proclamation of Arab American Heritage Month." It's just the font makes it look as it, if it's a subset of the prior item. So, it looks like it's the appointment of principal of Woodward High School, Reema Hassan, who just happens to be here tonight as well, so.
She'll take credit for everything.
So, I was wondering, Mrs. Harris, if that might be offset a little bit, so that it's clear that those were on, it maybe just moved below, because then we were talking about later on, about that Arab American Heritage Month. So, so I'll pass those over. Thank you.
Any other discussions? All those?
Arab American Heritage Month, just a question, was that also posted? The, the language from the policy and everything on our website and our pledge and all of that?
It would be on, Joanne, would it be on our normal?
It was on the agenda, the file for the agenda of that, of that month.
Are you comfortable with that?
Could you?
Yeah, I, I would like to see, I would like to see it on the website, that we recognized that month as being Arab American Heritage Month, and why, you know, just kind of some of the language that we had put there.
Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of these minutes being approved indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? It's unanimous, and of course, it's six, zero.